Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you for tuning in to the April 27th, 2021 Regular School Board Meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools. If you're able, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Laura, could you do a roll call, please?
Samurai?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Grandland?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Palmer, here, and Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
All right, thank you so much. Again, thank you for coming. I haven't read this in a while, so I'll go back to it. We have a little script here we read before these electronic meetings, and it says, "Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to Residents to Stay at Home and Guidance About Limiting Person-to-Person Contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meeting by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, a board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded, and access to this video will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible." All right. Having said that, I want to get on to important things like our vision statement, which is "Creating Worlds of Opportunity for Each and Every Learner: All Belong, All Succeed." And our core values are community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. So we're going to begin with the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, and we'll begin with approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
They'll move, Grandland.
Mary?
Second, Hala.
Second, Hala, thanks. Any discussion on the agenda? All right. Hearing done, could we do a roll call vote, please?
A Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. We'll go on to the announcements. On May 11th, Tuesday at 5:45, there's a school board meeting, a school board community engagement listening session via Zoom. On May 11th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there is a regular school board meeting here in the community room and via electronic means. On May 18th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there's a school board work session here in the community room and via electronic means. And on May 25th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting in the community room and via electronic means. And on May 25th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting in the community room and via electronic means. All right. We will move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right, great, thanks. We'll move on to communication to the board, and we'll start with citizen employee representatives. And at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. I do not see anybody in the room, so we will continue on to the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report. Can I get a motion to move forward with the consent agenda?
They'll move, Mueller.
Lorian?
Second.
Second is Laura? Was that Laura? Yep.
Yes.
And discussion on the consent agenda? All right, roll call vote, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, motion carries. And we will move on to the acknowledgements of contributions. I'm going to read the acknowledgement of contributions, and then I'll ask for a motion to move that forward, as it is a resolution. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district requests donations or gifts for any purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated, in that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the districts or for the peoples thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $36,730. Detailed background includes monetary donations. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. The Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters, $15,000. Brian and Teresa Born, $1,000. Olson Joint Trust, $1,000. Dean and Joyce Bliss, $2,000. Pat Johnson, $2,000. Fridley Lions Club, $3,000. Renee Janice Johnson, $1,000. PEO Chapter EZ, $200. Rasmussen Northeast Bank Foundation, $1,500. Building Systems Solutions, $500. Robert and Janelle Niznik, $350. Joseph and Jeanette Vordrum's, $50. Julie Kaitor, $50. Desiree Gillis, $100. Sandra Davidson, $100. Wendy Bornington, $100. Barbara Tackey, $50. John Luth, $50. Danae Bipes, $1,000. Barbara St. Peter, $100. Andrew Cowell, $50. Robert U., $250. Coleman Nemirov, $200. Jean Richards, $20. William Sherwin, $40. Al Ogde, $50. Gordon Olson, $100. Connie Hansen, $50. Dean Miley, $100. Eva Coverdston, $100. Gail Hubbell, $25. Carl Lightbody, $25. Ann O'Neil, $200. Gerald Riding, $400. Katie McAvoy, $200. Harlan and Doris Downing, $1,000. Nancy Hornabroch, $200. Glenda Glor, $100. Edward Nelson, $500. Elsie Boquist, $100. Luann Riestad, $20. Tom Mulligan, $250. Kathleen Kane, $500. Merrily Olin, $300. Janet Larson, $100. Joy Bliss, $50. Diane Westberg, $100. Stephanie Nowak, $200. Paula Hall, $100. Van Bookout, $100. Betty Winberg, $50. Kathy Kelly, $500. Pamela Sigurdsson, $300. Ralph Carkey, $100. Wayne Kutske, $50. Michelle Edwardson, $100. Janet Vaughn, $250. Merrill Jordal, $500. Elaine Narbo, $100. Roger and Karen Sedlowski, $100. Nicole Halaby, $100. Total fiscal year 2020-2021 monetary contributions to date, $111,083.60. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
They'll move. Molly.
Okay, Molly, thanks.
Second, Hala.
Second, Hala. Discussion.
A huge thank you to everybody who contributed. It is an amazing contribution, and it's really appreciated by the students and their families. So, thank you.
Natty?
Yeah, Molly.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely appreciate it from everybody. Just kind of a fun fact, I guess, when you were reading that off, it's almost like a trip down memory lane for anyone that graduated from Columbia Heights Public Schools, recognizing just the gratitude to the teachers and staff from present and past. Some of those teachers, I think, left our district probably about 20 years ago, shortly after I did, and they're still contributing to the scholarships for our kids today. So, much appreciated. Thank you, everyone.
It might sound silly, but one of the things I was actually looking forward to the most when I became board chair was being able to read this, because it's always fun to celebrate the depth of care that people show by their donations, and so many other ways, of course, but this is a very tangible way of showing that people care about the future of our kids, not just the now for them, but this is for the scholarship fund that contributes to their future education, which is pretty remarkable. So, thank you to everyone who donated in that really long list. All right, roll call, please, Laura.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, resolution passes. We will move on to discussion reports and information items, and we'll start with reports from members of the board, and we'll start with Hala.
Okay, so I attended the work session last week and then the Subcommittee on Community Engagement, and I had a communication with Superintendent Xena Stenbik.
All right, thanks. We'll go on to Mary. Yep.
I was able to connect with Principal Coolman and some members of the community, and obviously was here at the work session last week.
All right, awesome. And Molly.
Thanks, Natty. Sorry about that, I'm having little glitches on my computer here. Thank you. I attended the vigil that the district held in conjunction with the city for Dante Wright, and then also attended a Community Crisis Response Team meeting with the mayor. She's just putting together a team of community members, leaders, just in case, I think as she put it, like, God forbid, anything similar to what happened in Brooklyn Center were to happen here, just so that we would be organized and able to respond a little bit quicker in the way that meets the community's needs. I also attended the work session last week, as well as the Subcommittee on Community Engagement meeting, and got to watch some kiddos in action at a track meet. I also had several conversations with Superintendent Stenbik and parents, teachers, students, and community members. Thank you.
Thanks, Molly. We'll go on to Laura.
Well, I didn't have a very busy week with school board-related activities. I did attend the work-study session last week. That's it for my report.
Thanks, Laura. Move on to Lorian.
All right, I have a busy school board couple of weeks. I did complete Phase 3 school board training through MSBA. I also have started for Phase 4 training. That first session was last week, I'll finish that tomorrow. I attended, by way of volunteering, a synchronized swim meet, and have seen some on streaming, so again, shout out to our activities department who can get those streaming as well. I also attended the vigil for Dante Wright. I attended a series of baseball games. I attended the chair meeting prior to the work session, also attended the work session, and attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement meeting. I also attended the city council meeting and gave a report as a liaison, and attended the chair meeting prior to this meeting.
All right, awesome. I also attended the vigil, and I want to thank Superintendent Stenbik for your words there. I was able to attend both the chair meetings before the work session last week, which I attended, and the one right before this meeting. I had multiple conversations with Superintendent Stenbik along the way, and had a few fun sporting events. I was able to attend softball, boys tennis, and a lacrosse match, and I somehow managed two of the three nights to have nice weather. So, that says something in the recent run of the last couple of weeks of weather. I did sit in a 40-degree raining softball game, though, so that kind of made up for the other two nice nights. All right, Superintendent Stenbik, do you have a report for us?
Madam Chair, yes, I do, members of the board. We continue to dedicate a lot of time on COVID-related activity in the district, including contact tracing, socially distancing during in-person learning, working with modified schedules, transportation issues, and onsite COVID testing. And I just want to say that I realize it's difficult to maintain the COVID-safe practices, and I just want to urge staff, students, and families to please hang in there, to keep up the safety protocol so that we can continue to have students on campus, because it is wonderful to have the students on campus. This year, rather than monthly admin team meetings, we've been, the team's been meeting weekly to discuss the learning model implementation and COVID-related items. And at our last meeting, we had an in-depth discussion on student and staff mental health. The district's student support team created a resource page for staff and a virtual calming room for all ages to interact with various activities. And similar to last summer, we will be able to continue mental health support throughout the summer months. It's just really important that we're all tuned in to the unique needs of our students and staff, especially during this year, where many people can feel isolated and disconnected. And so, it's been a lot of focus on those kinds of issues. And I was able to have conversations with multiple board members, and for that, I thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you. We will move on to an update from the City of Columbia Heights, so I'd like to welcome Connie Biskins, our city council liaison.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. First off, Park &amp; Rec has now a new registration website for families out there, if you're interested in signing your children up for activities. It's a lot easier, and it looks really nice. Second, on April 30th at 2:00 in the afternoon at Lomiaki Park, Sister City will be there. We are celebrating Arbor Day by planting a Linden tree. On Saturday, May 15th at 1:00 PM, the History of Columbia Heights Zoom presentation will be available. You can just go to the city website to hook into that. And I've been to one before, well, quite a while ago, and it's really interesting to hear some of the history years ago, especially in the early 1900s. Also, for those who don't know yet, we are planning to redevelop the empty lot behind the Public Safety Building, and the developer that we're working with on it had his first neighborhood meeting to discuss, it's going to be affordable, 62 units of affordable housing on one side, and later on, Saika will be doing their presentation. They plan on building a new building there because they're bursting at the seams where they're located now at Public Works. And for those who don't know yet, the Centennial quote that was worked on by several women, quite a few women in our city, they put in 300 hours, is now available to look at at the city's library. When you go in, you take a left towards the community room, and they have it hanging on the inside of the glass doors. On the inner ring, I believe, is the history going way back, and then on the outer ring, our current historical events from our city. And on Saturday, May 22nd at 1:00, we again have another Zoom presentation on Architect Avenue, and for those, it's south of 37th, and apparently had quite a history about it, and it originally was part of Columbia Heights decades and decades ago, and then it became part of Minneapolis, but they're doing a presentation on that. And just good news, our public safety staff learned how to give shots, and this past Thursday and Friday, we were able to give 466 shots on Thursday and on Friday to community members here in Columbia Heights, and we're super excited about that. And maybe we'll know later on, there might be some other clinics popping up, they're playing it by ear right now, so for folks out there who might be interested, just keep an eye on the city website or Facebook page. And I think that's it for now. Thank you, everyone.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Councilmember Biskins?
Just thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
For the updates.
I'm looking for hands, sorry. All right, looks like you're off the hook. Thank you for joining us tonight for the update.
You're welcome.
All right, have a good night.
You, too.
All right, we will move on to Federal COVID-19 Relief Funding, better known as ESER, right?
Yes.
That's what we're calling it. So, I would like to welcome Director Hennekenz to tell us more about that.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. Oh, we have a four-year-old waiting.
Hi, Charlotte. Tell her hi, or him.
All right. Here, just give me one second here, and I'll give her her milk, and she'll be happy.
I was going to say, it looks like there's chocolate milk right there, so.
There is chocolate milk.
Yeah, I would be at your desk if I was near you, too, to try to get that.
I love it.
This is, we've had some fun, we've had some fun director children on Zoom calls lately, and this is, welcome to 2020-2021 work-life.
Missing Hala's cat, though.
Yeah, Hala's cat will jump in the frame sooner or later here.
I was waiting to see if we'd see one of Laura's cats, too, on her.
Whoa, oh, there it is, okay.
Let's see, do you, which?
Yes.
It's good, we can see it.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. This evening, I have, so, an update on COVID-19 Relief Fund, and it's, we've had some additional funding streams come in, and so I kind of wanted to review where we're at currently, what's happened with the COVID relief funding, and where we're at currently, and then moving forward. So, of course, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values, focusing on community excellence, collaboration, integrity, and innovation, through this presentation. So, there's no governance this evening, this is just an informational update to the board. So, starting with ESER and GEAR, the original funds that we received, within, you know, recent months, they've been coined ESER 1 and GEAR 1. So, Minnesota allocation was $43.4 million on the GEAR side, and on the ESER side, it was $140.1 million. And so, on GEAR side, it was focused on broadband, on hotspots. We bought approximately 300 hotspots that we distributed to students throughout the district. We've purchased additional devices. You know, we're now getting into the summer school programming with that funding. On the ESER side, we've hired some staff to support our learning models. You know, there's been a lot of PPE and cleaning and sanitizing, so all of these things, you know, the majority of these expenses, you know, mental health supports, focusing in on the underserved populations. And the ESER funding is really being based off of the title. And so, you've seen this before as well, this kind of just breaks it down a little bit more, we talk about those health needs, the physical, mental, social, emotional connection to the school, that physical, digital, and social, emotional, so those devices, those hotspots, and then, you know, these increasing effective learning opportunities for the students, again, those underserved populations. So, this is just kind of a repeat, we've seen this before, and how we kind of stepped through, or started with this funding. And so, in that first round, that allocation that we had, you know, $132,000 for GEAR, you can read down below, and just under shy of $1 million, so that was our original allocation with funding. We've been actively spending those dollars this fiscal year, and FY '21, and we actually originally started this process in FY '20, the previous year, fiscal year, but then along came the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And so, suddenly, we switched gears, because in that fund, you know, we're looking at boost, boosting student-family educator support, prioritizing equity, operational costs associated with our learning model that we're working through, and we're kind of the broad areas with those dollars. But those dollars were only available from July 1 of 2020 through December 30 of 2020. So, suddenly, we had to shift gears, and we had to work on these relief dollars and spend those first, then we could switch back to ESER 1 and GEAR 1 dollars and continue on spending on those. So, our total allocation was there, was just shy of $1.2 million. So, those dollars have been expensed in that timeframe of July 1, 2020, through December 30, 2020. So, we're done with that fund, and so, since then, since that December 30, we've been working on that GEAR 1 and ESER 1 allocation. So, now, there's a second round that came, and those ESER 2 dollars. So, now, you can see Minnesota's allocation with ESER 2 dollars was $529.2 million, so significantly more than that $140-some million from ESER 1 allocation. So, same, same exact rules as ESER 1, and, but then, they added some additional pieces to it. So, there's actually 12 specific items that, you know, are allowable expenses for ESER 1 or categories, and then now they've added additional ones. And the biggest piece that I want to point out with the additional adds is really those air quality projects. So, now, we can start using these dollars for things with our facilities. So, in ESER 2, we can start talking about facility needs, indoor air quality needs with these dollars. So, the ESER and GEAR 2 Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, so, these funds are available to us now, but I think a big note is that we don't really start spending these dollars until we've spent round 1 dollars. So, we have ESER 1 and GEAR 1, so, once we've expensed ESER 1, then we can immediately start expensing ESER 2. And, you know, there's a note that in there that, which I haven't, I've skipped over some things, like in the original allocation, that non-public entities within our district received a proportion of our ESER 1 and our GEAR 1 dollars. They do not have to expense their portion of that, even though it comes through us, as long as we've expensed ours, our portion of it. All we have to do is ask MDE, and then we can move forward with our expenses, in which we do anticipate that our ESER 1 and GEAR 1 dollars will, we will expense those in FY '21, and in particular, in ESER 1, will be expensed first, and we'll be able to move into ESER 2, so we won't be able to have to worry about suddenly, you know, say, in the next month or two, hitting those expenses into the general fund until, you know, ESER 2 can take over, we can continue those expenses through ESER 2 dollars. Now, these funds, we have now until September 30, 2023, to expense, and I'm sure everybody, when I went to the slide, jumped to our allocation of, you know, just shy of $2.7 million or $2.65 million. So, obviously, the pot is bigger in this round, and, but also, again, we start talking about facility needs and indoor air quality needs, you know, those are definitely much more expensive needs, and as we ramp up some of the additional supports that we're doing, you know, we'll see those expenses increase proportionately from what we are experiencing in ESER 1. So, now, it's, it's still not available to us, even though we're going to have to expense those first two rounds before we get to round three, ESER 3 is already here. And so, Minnesota's allocation is $1.2 billion, so, again, now significantly more than ESER 2 round. So, you can imagine that our allocation, or at least at this point, our estimated allocation is going to be much bigger than ESER 3. But again, it's the same rules apply as ESER 1 and ESER 2, and one special additional note here is that 20% of these funds must be used for counteracting the effects of loss of learning time, is a specific added note, even though that what we're expensing on, it would now, is, would fit right into that category. So, this is the American Rescue Plan Act, and funds will likely be available to us in FY '22, but again, we're going to have to expense round two before we get to round three. And again, now, we have an extra year with these funds, so funds can be spent September 30 through 2024. So, we're carrying into the future, which is, you know, fantastic, considering, you know, the long-term effects of what's happened so far. So, I think it's important to focus on that, that, you know, there has been some substantial long-term effects, and there's a lot of work, and that work is going to take a lot of expense moving forward. So, our estimated allocation is just shy of $6 million for this round. So, our focus is on these expenses moving forward, and there's, you know, more conversations So our focus is on, on these expenses moving forward and there's, you know, more conversations happening, some of the decisions have been made, some of them haven't. Some of them are just broad ideas moving forward, once we, we move from our FY twenty-one, um, budget and staffing to FY twenty-two conversations moving forward. So academic acceleration, um, is, is a big in our discussions, uh, moving forward. You know, additionally, uh, working with institutional coaches and commissioners, um, you know, we're focusing on summer school programming. Now that's just not summer school program for this year, but it's next year and the year after, so what, how can we build? Um, and, and, and again, accelerate that learning moving forward for what, what's happened recently. Um, really focusing on re-engaging families in the community with that school, that school culture, I think is going to be important. Um, you know, that's definitely, there's been some loss there. Um, you know, some students and families have struggled more than others, but we need, we need to focus there. Obviously staffing is going to be a big player in this. And, you know, we, we're already planning in, in next year and conversations about how, how can we, we, um, work with reducing class sizes where sizes are a little bit bigger as we right-size the organization for that, for those, those, um, additional supports. Again, to help accelerate that learning. Um, of course to focus on mental health and, um, additional support staff in the building, which we found incredibly helpful, um, as we've worked through these learning models, um, over this, this past school year. Again, facilities and operations are a big part of this, um, indoor air quality projects as we start focusing in there. And obviously we, you know, there's that personal protective equipment, sanitizing, cleaning, that doesn't go away. These are things that are, we're going to continue to have expense of. And, and we've talked about it at the board level here, um, and we, we talk about it where we see a weekly report on it internally and talk about it. But that loss of enrollment, um, and, you know, these Esser two and Esser three dollars can really help to, um, defer that impact of loss of enrollment. So, um, those are the, the, the new additional funds, um, you know, again, specifically with Esser two, what our actual allocation is and then with other Esser three, what our anticipated estimated allocation is. So, I think that's.
Well, thank you. Uh, does anyone have any questions? All right, very clear, I mean, I, I, I followed that, so thank you. All right, thank you Director Hennigens. We will move on to the School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement update. Lorian, are you taking the reins on that one or is?
I am, yes, I'm providing the update for the committee, which is myself, Holla and Molly. Kind of as you remember when we've arranged that the board will, or the subcommittee will give the board an update at the next board meeting, following our meeting. Um, so the subcommittee met on the twentieth. Um, we talked about the future community engagement sessions coming up. Um, we do have the May eleventh date, as you mentioned in the announcements, um, coming up, and then we have an August and November, um, to be determined. So we've got that, the May eleventh one is from five forty-five to six forty-five. That, we did create an agenda to be used during that meeting and Molly and I tried that out at the previous community engagement, um, list, or session that we had, the first one, um, that was happening over Zoom. And that agenda really kind of helped the two board members that were there, um, guide and engage conversations. Um, it also helped just kind of break up that session so that, um, it gave a little bit of like, you know, kind of here are some updates and we'll talk about early childhood and community ed and elementaries. So it gave people a, a window of time to talk about what may have, um, come up or something that they want to talk about. The idea that the agenda isn't to present to, to participants, but, um, to help, uh, provide a timeline and make sure that all are heard, um, during that, um, community engagement session. So that agenda will be provided to the two folks that are doing the community engagement session. Um, it has, um, thanks Dawn, has put, you know, the logos on it, it's something that can actually be shared, um, including the contact information for the two board members that are doing the session, so it's something that can be shared on the screen for participants to see. Um, it was noted at our last, uh, community engagement session, um, that some participants had brought up that, um, we were not serving our non-English speaking, um, community members. So, um, it, there was a conversation about interpreters as well as the kind of technology and support to do breakout rooms, um, if needed. And so, um, I believe Holla was going to be following up with that, but that's something that we've addressed a need for as well. Um, the committee is also asking that the folks, that the board members who are doing the community engagement sessions, um, schedule, uh, a phone call or a Zoom meeting with Superintendent Stenvik following that community engagement session, um, within, within the week. So if the session's happening on Tuesday, kind of before the end of the day Friday, to just provide some updates, feedback, talk through any of the, um, comments, concerns, kudos that were provided during that engagement session. You know, when Molly and I did the last session, it was during a time that we were kind of talking about learning models and bringing secondary schools back to in-person learning. And we did have like a number of elementary parents providing kudos and, um, to the elem, you know, that, that the elementary had gone back. So it's just really a great way to stay on top of, exchange that information as well as, um, help the administration get the information that they need for any subsequent follow-ups. So taking, um, moving on from the community engagement sessions, um, we looked at, you know, what's next, kind of what are the next steps that we can do, uh, as a board in community engagement? Um, one is talking about the, a, a welcome back letter, and that was something that as the board we had brought up, um, a while ago. But the subcommittee would like to recommend to the board that a welcome back, or welcome letter, welcome and/or welcome back letter from the board is prepared and distributed late August, early September, kind of at that back-to-school time. That would also include a photo of the board, either formal or casual, you know, perhaps something outdoor, um, you know, maybe taken at graduation or something, you know, time that we're, we're together. And we just think it helps let people know who we are, um, if they see us at community events and around. Um, the board, or the subcommittee has also, um, is also recommending that Board Chair Severson draft that letter. So it isn't a letter that's done by committee, but if you can start that out for something that we can take a look at as a board. Um, we also discussed, um, conferences, you know, that was something that we were doing prior to COVID, is that we were, um, appearing in the schools during conferences. That was something that we talked about was really beneficial, so kind of keeping that on the table, um, if we're doing in-person conferences moving forward. Also, we talked about community outreach, and I think one of the things the committee talked about is making sure that we're not creating a lot of to-dos, you know, for the board, but then realizing what our role is, is to engage with the community, represent our community and, and kind of it's like, it's, it's being of the board members, governance, policy and engagement, right? So taking that seriously. And having the board have an opportunity, each board member to, um, to reach out either formally or informally to other groups within our community. Whether it's Boosters, Lions, Heights Next, the Crestview Nursing Homes, Recreation, you know, with the seniors. Um, and inviting community members to our schools, events, plays, concerts, sporting events, kind of once we're more open to visitors, um, to let our community know that they're welcome here, we want them to be here, we want them to be part of this community and, and maybe having that personal connection and personal invitation, um, to what we're, what we're doing, so really kind of finding touch points within the community. Um, we also talked about, um, the board's role in back-to-school events, and so that's something the committee is going to continue to brainstorm and discuss there. And, um, finally, the subcommittee, um, has recommended that the vice chair, um, is a standing member of the subcommittee and serves as the chair of the subcommittee. Much like the chair is a member of the policy committee, serves as, as chair of that committee, um, we are making that recommendation as well. Holla, Molly, did I miss anything? There's a lot of updates from our committee.
Sounds about right, thank you.
You got it, thank you, Lorian. Um, and Dawn, thank you for, um, making the agenda look nice and Columbia Heights-ish and everything. She did say that she's going to post that to the web, um, to the district website a few days prior to the engagement session too.
Great, thank you.
Mary.
So I recently heard that the jamboree is back on as well as the parade. And as we're talking about, um, community engagement, that's something that, you know, I know over the years I've seen the board, riding in the van and things like that, are we planning on being a part of the parade, is that something that's been discussed? Is that community engagement or is that Superintendent Stenvik?
It's typically run through the district, so I'm going to.
Actually, we have been discussing it, Dawn and I in particular have been discussing it and trying to determine how we could participate in a COVID-safe way. So perhaps we wouldn't be able to go up to the people and hand out the temporary tattoos that are so much fun. But we're definitely, um, working that out on the ways and soon, um, we'll, we'll probably be reaching out to the board to see who's able and available.
I just, I just had a, like a junior high reaction where I was just going to talk over you. Cause I really want us to get those like extender poles with the grabbers, you know, on the end? That you can extend, you know, like, I'm short, so I could use one.
I have some at my house, yeah.
Could we, could we do that? I don't know.
Definitely.
I could, I could have some fun with that. Yeah. Anyway, that's beside the point, I'll let the, I'll let the district worry about the extender poles. All right, well, any questions from, any other questions, I saw Mary had one. Mary, thank you for using Board Book to raise your hand, you were the first official hand raiser on Board Book, so that's pretty great. And I actually saw it. Puts up a pretty large notice for me over here, it'd be tough to miss.
I, I think, think too, if, if the board is okay with, I think the, the one action item is the, having the vice chair serve as the, as a standing member on that committee and, and acting as chair. Um, and maybe Dawn can help us maneuver if we need to update our, do a new resolution or kind of update, you know, that we should memorialize that in some way. If that's something that the rest of the board agrees on.
I'd be, I'm fine with that, I think it makes it, it's simple. I think it's probably hard to function as a group without somebody at least taking the reins. And we haven't had a issue, to my knowledge and my experience on the board with a, you know, a chair of a subcommittee or just go wild and completely set the agenda with no voice. All right.
Thank you.
Superintendent Stenvik, can you consult with our super expert Dawn and see if she thinks we should put that in a resolution or if it's just working policy, kind of like a spoken practice?
Will do.
Thanks. Thank you, thank you. Um, I love the idea of the community touch points. I'll just like say, I think that's really, that's a, that's a pretty, like, accessible thing for us to do. And yet could have a big dividend in us continuing to create collaborative relationships in the community. I'm more than happy to write a letter, um, I'm, I'll turn it over to the board, obviously, before it gets sent and we can, you can offer feedback, it'll probably appear in a board packet or something eventually, but.
Have our red pens ready.
Red, yeah, there will be red pens, and it'll be like my word choice, I've been with this board long enough to know. We love words. We loved, we, Superintendent Kathy Kelly used to make quite fun of us, uh, for our desire to pick on words. I'm sure she was stoked about our roadmap conversations, but we drove her to retirement. I'm just kidding, that's a joke for everyone watching. That was a joke. Uh, we love you Kathy, I'm sure she's sat home watching each and every one of these meetings. Yeah, uh, I love the, I love the community touch points. And then my question, there is a question at the end of this. I know we talked about who had the May and then August community engagement, or the, who is going to appear, but I, I cannot remember which I am signed up for, so I should probably know this.
It's not the one in May. I believe it's Holla and Mary are in May.
Yep.
And then I believe it's, um, Natty and Laura in August.
Natty and Laura in August. And do you happen to know offhand the August date to make sure it's in my calendar, but if you don't, I can find that later, you can request that information too. Dawn?
I don't know that we set that date, I think we were looking to, look to kind of see what else was going on, but.
Dawn turned on her camera, so this is a good, she probably has some information for us.
Ms. Mueller said that, what I was going to say, so, yes, there was not a date set for August.
All right.
And so far we have been doing, the, the last one and this coming one is a Tuesday before a board meeting. And I guess maybe perhaps that you could provide feedback to the committee, you know, if that's working. I think it worked well for Molly and I, um, on that first one. If that's something that continues to work, then, you know, one of the Tuesdays prior, you know, the five forty-five to six forty-five timeframe prior to a board meeting might work, so.
Sounds good to me. All right, any last questions or comments? Laura, I see that hand.
Yeah, I tried to use it in Board Book, but I, I don't think it, I think it doesn't have a long life there.
Oh, it is, it is right there, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I was trying to follow the rules.
Giant prompt.
Yeah, um, actually, um, earlier we were, uh, you were discussing the, um, uh, the appointment of the vice chair to the community engagement as the board chair of that subcommittee. Um, shouldn't that just be in our policy?
We don't have a policy on community subengagement, or the, we don't have a policy. We have a resolution guiding this one, so we created, we passed that resolution first as the ad hoc and now as a standing committee.
Okay, okay, I, for some reason I was thinking we were, we were setting it in some sort of policy, um, but now I remember, thank you for the clarification.
And thanks for raising your hand on Board Book, I got to train myself to glance. All right, I think we're ready to move on then, if I'm not hearing from anyone else. All right, we will move on to our action items, and the first one is online learning, and I'd like to welcome Executive Director Niangwe and Director Tukroll.
Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik and members of the board. On April thirteenth, um, no, excuse me, I have to introduce my friend. Director Tukroll is with me tonight, uh, for this action item. So on April thirteenth, a group of us came and presented some information about becoming an approved online learning provider. Uh, in that information, we shared the process that we've undertaken to develop and complete the application, as well as some communication that we've had with, uh, members of the district, as well as the high school and the sec, and Columbia Academy. So tonight, uh, we are here seeking approval from the board to pursue the formal process to become an approved online learning provider.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to become approved, let me make sure I'm reading this right. The motion is to approve Columbia Heights Public Schools to pursue the formal process to become an approved online learning provider. Can I get a motion for that?
Got moved, Mueller.
Lorian? Second?
Second, Palmer.
Laura? I got Laura, I've got Laura on that one, Dawn. All right, uh, discussion. Lorian, I got it, I see your, I see your physical hand.
I, I think this is really something, you know, kind of going back to our core values of being innovation, of the innovation piece. And I think also looking at our mission of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner and really looking to say, hey, here are some things that we did well, um, through distance learning, and let's use those to provide educational opportunities for each and every learner, regardless of, you know, uh, just, I shouldn't say regardless, but just depending on what their needs are and what works best for them. So I appreciate the exploration of this, um, and, and really seeing if it's something that might work for, for students and staff alike. So I, I think this is a great idea to, to move forward.
Yeah, we've talked about personalized learning, and we've talked about twenty-first century learning. And so I, I agree that this moves us in a direction of just creative innovation for, for kids and, and, and maybe teachers. There'll be some teachers who are very excited about this opportunity. And so, while I know it's not the ideal model for everyone, it could be a really great option for some. And so I'm excited, and I thank you guys for all the hard work that you've been doing. Laura, I see your hand there, virtual hand.
Yeah, I think that this really does, um, just echoing what, what everybody else is saying here. This is, we, we really did want to get to a point where we, we were, had truly personalized learning. And this is, um, this is definitely something that I, I, I believe is going to be very beneficial for, for a portion of our students. You know, maybe at, you know, maybe now, maybe later, um, that to being able to have this kind of access is, um, I, I just really commend, uh, the administration for putting this together. You know, maybe at, you know, maybe now, maybe later, that to being able to have this kind of access is, I just really commend the administration for putting this together. Thank you.
Hala, I see your virtual hand.
Yes, I wasn't sure if I could.
You did it right, very good.
Yay. So, you know, COVID did a real job on education, not just here in the country, in the world, everywhere. But this is something that I'm glad came out of it, an opportunity to make something innovative, to make something different. We were all locked into a system that we couldn't change. You know, we all talked about the things we need to change and how we need to meet the needs of every single learner. But our system wasn't, wasn't really working. So this is an opportunity. And I remember last year when this all started, when COVID hit and we went to distance learning. I was thinking about like, okay, there are going to be really big opportunities right now. Like, this system has been disrupted. So I'm really proud of our district for taking this brave step right now.
Yeah, thank you. And Mary, I see your hand.
Yeah, again, just what everybody else is saying, this wasn't an easy thing to put together, this presentation and all of the data and the work that you've done. Setting it up is, is amazing. And sort of to echo what everybody else is saying, in social work, we say, meet the client where they're at. And this is truly meeting the students and the families where they're at and providing them a service. Because, you know, for some kids, we have seen an immense amount of growth in their ability to be engaged, to get the work done, and to be successful in ways that maybe they hadn't been before. And it's clear that this system is, is wonderful and helpful. And also, it still allows children and families to be connected to our school community. So I want to also, like Hala said, I'm immensely proud of the work that our district has done for distance learning. We've, you know, listening to families and students and educators from around the state, I think that we've done an amazing job. And I'm excited to continue that as we move forward. I think that this is just sort of the next wave of supporting students and families and educators. So I'm, I'm very happy with this.
All right, any other questions before we call for a roll call? All right, Laura, would you mind a roll call vote, please?
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
We will go on to the Northeast Metro 916 Agreement for Services. And I'd like to welcome Director John Fry.
Good evening, thank you for that warm welcome. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, I'm here seeking approval for North, for the agreement with Northeast Metro 916 and Columbia Heights Public Schools in providing special education-related staffing services. This agreement is for the purpose of Northeast Metro 916, again, to provide those services, both special education-related services within Columbia Heights, as well as a continuum of services serving our students.
All right, and we did have a more lengthy discussion about this last week. But the motion is for board approval for Northeast Metro 916 and Columbia Heights Public Schools to enter into an agreement for 916 to provide special education and related staffing services. Do I have a motion on that?
Got moved, Mueller.
Lorian, thanks. Second?
Second, Molly.
Second, Molly. Discussion. Looking for the virtual hand raises.
I see Ms. Palmer's.
Oh, there it is.
Sorry.
There it is, Laura, thank you.
I, I don't know how you manage to go between all the screens with Board Book and stuff, I keep losing it. Yeah, I just, I guess I just wanted to refine and clarify this agreement. It's for, basically, I guess in layman's terms, sort of like a timeshare of specialized fields, like for the hard of hearing, blind and deaf, other, so we don't have to hire a full staff person for that position. Instead, we can purchase, purchase those services as we need and to meet the needs of our students. And I did actually have a question as well. Does the assessment team also fall under this particular agreement?
It would be. It's the consultation services in behavior, mental health, and programming. So that assessment program or that mobile assessment unit that comes out and assesses some of our students in their homes is part of that as well.
Okay, yeah, because that's, that's a, that's a fabulous benefit now, that mobile assessment unit is really cool.
I agree.
Very innovative.
And I would assume very helpful to teachers and special education teachers.
And, yeah, and to students and getting them assessed and connecting them. And especially some of our students who've moved in to Columbia Heights. We've been able to use that to kind of help with that transition into Columbia Heights.
Great, any other questions? All right, Laura, if you would do a roll call vote, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We will move on to board topics. Just a reminder to put in your calendar our dates with Anthony Muhammad for our goal number three, our equity goal. Don't forget to put those dates on your calendar. There are some odd times for our board, so want to make sure we, we remember them. And those will be virtual, just for reference. He will be meeting with us individually, but virtually, so. Other, others, no, that's another wrong meeting, other board topics. All right, hearing none. I will adjourn this meeting at 7:57 PM.